Someone else turned off here, am I?
This is Elizabeth, I'm on Zoom with five couns- or five counselors and we can't hear anything.
Okay, Elizabeth, hold up. So they can't hear that? I get Counselor D. about this session here, Councilor Mary, can you hear?
Yeah, Counselor, um, we, I can hear you Mayor, Mr. Mayor, but it's echoey. Um, Justin Salazar Torres said he can't hear either.
So what do we?
This is.
No, I have it on the mute.
Everything's muted except for.
Hello? Are you guys here now?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I disconnected the audio now.
Can hear fine now, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you for bearing with us our technical difficulties. Uh, thank you for joining us, it is our second and last meeting of the month for January, our regular council meeting. Thank you for joining us, all the members of the public for coming out this evening, we have some very positive things on the agenda we want to recognize. And so thank you to the student leaders that will be recognized later this evening. Ms. Garcia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Peggy Sue Martinez. Counselors, uh, Dennis Tim Salazar.
Present.
Justin Salazar Torres.
Present.
Manuel J. Martinez.
Present.
Denise Di Benavides.
Present.
Dorothy D. Valdez.
Present.
Erin J. Salazar.
Present.
Minette D. Rodriguez.
Present.
We have a court.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, gonna go into the approval of the agenda. Just real quick, I was going over the minutes for the city council meeting for adoption this evening, I don't believe that is the exact date that is being submitted now for adoption this evening. June twenty third.
What are your questions?
The minutes that are being presented for adoption this evening?
Right, they're from a past meeting.
Yes, but it's not the same date as you advertised.
The twenty third, what is the actual date, do you know, do you remember?
I caught it this afternoon, I'm sorry. Does someone have a packet through? Yeah, they're from the twenty first.
The twenty first?
Twenty first.
Okay, I'll make sure to.
So, I don't have legal counsel here, but I don't know, I don't want to look into a homo violation.
I would just sit there and damn and sit relax with me.
Yeah.
Alright, so being that that is the case, uh, I'd like to recommend for tonight's agenda to table, uh, the minutes for the city council meeting from June twenty third, twenty twenty two, under the consent agenda. As well as under executive session, I'm asking for the removal of item B, the discussed no action pending mitigation status of settlement negotiations for Aragon Water and city's request for settlement funding.
May I make the motion to amend the agenda?
May motion made by Counselor Minette Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Peggy Sue Martinez. Any discussion?
Under discussion, Mayor, uh, we're removing the Aragon water situation. Cause it's not settled, or what's going on?
Uh, because it was an advertised property.
Okay.
And then, uh, additionally, the consent agenda was just off by the wrong A on the agenda. Just to be safe, we're not gonna adopt those minutes this evening. Any other discussion for tonight's meeting, so then? And being none, Ms. Garcia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Peggy Sue Martinez.
In favor.
Counselors, uh, Dennis Tim Salazar.
For the motion.
Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor.
Manuel J. Martinez.
In favor.
Denise Di Benavides.
In favor.
Dorothy D. Valdez.
For the motion.
Erin J. Salazar.
In favor.
Minette D. Rodriguez.
For the motion.
Motion, please.
Thank you, um, moving on from the agenda this evening, and just for, uh, information purposes, Cadisa Radio is now live broadcasting to the community, so it is now on the radio. Uh, public comments, Ms. Garcia.
Uh, first public comment I received in writing by Cynthia Lantani. And this will be attached to the, uh, minutes as an exhibit. City council meeting, the second. Public comment is by Ivan.
That's quick. Hi, my name is Ivan, and, um, I have a little concern here about, uh, we stand up for the flag, because this is America, and, um, you know, when I got my, when I, I got my, uh, I did my time, ninety-six hours, okay, and, um, I didn't get paid for some of that, for that five and a half hours. Uh, they put it on comp time, so I want to put on the board, okay? If you guys can make that an option, if people want the comp time. Because it seems, I guess they said, uh, it, it, that you gotta put on comp time. I'd rather get the money instead of comp time. Because, uh, I don't take vacations. I don't take, you know, so, that's just a little concern, uh, to put on the table, if you guys can do that for me, please? And some of the, some of the guys at my, at work also wanted to bring that up. Um, another thing too is, uh, if we can, um, you know, I, since I, I moved here now, so what I do is I, I ride my bike to work. So, uh, I try to save as much gas, city gas, because the people here is taxpayers. And, um, I feel like we shouldn't be using our city, uh, vehicles for personal use. Um, so, that's another thing I'll bring to the table. That, uh, if you live within twenty minutes, I believe people should just drive their own personal car. If you're on call, you can drive to the shop. Um, those are just some little things I want to put on the table because, uh, we need to save some money here. Um, another thing I just want to say real quick is that, um, thank you for, I, I mean, I probably don't make a lot of sense, but I do. I just want to put that up to the board, if that can, you know, if you guys can bring that to taking the comp time, it should be option. And not mandatory, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I have Ivan's last name and address?
I don't do that personal, I mean, I'll, do I, I don't have to do that, no?
Um, we can kind of ask for your last name at least.
It's M O R F I N.
Thank you.
Uh, Bethany Bradley. Hi guys, to you again. Um, I was actually going to bring something up, but there are a lot of children in this room, so I will keep it to myself tonight and wait for the next meeting. Um, as a respectable parent. Um, secondly, I was here at the last meeting. And I can tell you, I went home with some PTSD and triggers going on. With that whole situation was really nerve wracking, and I really hope that never happens again. Um, I've come to city council meetings for years now. Um, I can't say that what was said, um, I will not repeat the words. Really pertain to anybody in this room. I'm here all the time. We may not all get along, we may not all agree, but I surely do not believe what was said last month needed to be said. That's my opinion. Um, I want to call to the council, we all know Cook's Trailer Park has not been the best trailer park. Well, we have an amazing new manager there. And let me tell you, I make a phone call, he's on it. He's now fenced behind where a lot of the homeless and, um, addicts were hanging out, shooting up. Um, literally had them come in well defense between the older gentleman's property that's behind us and the trailer park where the circle is. To help keep them out of there, um, they cut down all the bushes over there that people were hiding behind to shoot up. Um, so kids in the morning don't have to walk by. Um, they're on it, but here's what I'm gonna call you guys, coming in March, we're gonna be doing a big cleanup, spring cleaning in our trailer park. I want to call to you, the mayor, and the rest of the city council to come and introduce yourselves to people at Cook's who don't even know that you guys exist. Come introduce yourself, get a, let them get to know you. I'm also extending this to the police department, I'm also extending it to the fire department. Come bring some, uh, fire alarms and some CO2s. Introduce yourselves so that they know that we care, because I can tell you, a lot of them are like, why are we gonna call, nobody shows up, nobody's ever shown up. You know, why am I gonna make this complaint, nobody comes. Where's, where's the city council? Wait, who is our local person? Who do we talk to? I'm like, you guys need to come out and introduce yourselves to the community, cause not all of us, not all of them know that you're there. So I, as soon as I get the date, I'm gonna call for you guys to come out on a Saturday or Sunday. And I will walk that park with you, and help you learn and introduce you to the people that are there, the good people that are in our trailer park. Not everybody there is a bad person. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia.
That would be it, Mayor.
Thank you for the public comment this evening, uh, thank you, Ms. Bradley, uh, thank you, Mr. Morfin, for your comments. Uh, the manager will duly note them as well, cause those things are personal policy issues that aren't handled here by the government body. Uh, moving on, uh, Councilor comments. Close time tonight, okay. Moving on, uh, matters from the mayor.
I have a comment, Mayor, sorry.
Counselor Manny Martinez.
Thank you, sir. Uh, first off, I just want to congratulate Espanola and Chimaio's own Marisol Medina for, uh, taking the youth category award at this past weekend, or a couple of weekends ago, the New Mexico Espinal Music Association's award. So a big congratulations to her. Uh, for all of you that maybe know who Marisol is, she is the daughter of Lolo and Joanne Medina that are very active in the lowrider community and, and participate in many, uh, activities throughout the year, uh, with the Lowrider Association. So a big kudos to her and congratulations. But with that, uh, being said, I would like to also, uh, as a member of the New Mexico Espinal Music Association, um, I was in some of the meetings and, uh, I, to my surprise, uh, I was, I found out that the city of Espanola was a sponsor of the event through lodgers tax, at least that's what I was told. And, uh, as far as I can, uh, figure, we don't have a lodgers tax board, uh, to distribute that money or to give us, uh, recommendations to the city council to who to give that money to, so I would like to ask our finance chair, if she could investigate this and see, uh, how this money was distributed, uh, considering, uh, ordinance two nine eight dash one five states that the city council shall administer the lodgers tax monies collected. The mayor shall appoint the five-member advisory board that consists of two members who are owners and are operators of lodging sus- uh, subject to the occupancy tax within the city, two members are who are owners or operators of industries located within the city that primary provide services or products to tourists. And one member who is a resident of the city and represents the general public. The board shall advise the city council on expenditures of funds authorized under two nine eight dash sixteen for advertising, publicizing, promoting tourist attractions and facilities to the city and the surrounding areas. Like I said, I don't have an issue, uh, because that does provide a lot of, of, uh, of tourism coming to our valley or to our city, but the fact that we did not follow our city ordinance in order for it to be given out. So I would like our, uh, finance chair and the supervisor committee could investigate and see what's going on there, and if any other monies was, has been distributed through the lodgers tax. Uh, also, it was my understanding, uh, that, uh, through that, uh, lodgers tax, uh, sponsorship, uh, tickets were given to the city as well, and under ethics and principles, it states that no public officer employee may request or receive, and no person may offer a public officer employee any money or thing of value or promise there for under the ethics and principles, so I would like that investigated to see if that's the case that, that happened. Uh, so that we can correct this. I believe we, we may have a lot of, of activities coming to our valley this coming year, and I'd like to see that that money is distributed correctly, uh, even if it means that we may have to, uh, change the ordinance because of my understanding of the of getting operators of lodgings to be able to be part of this board. Uh, perhaps we need to look into changing that ordinance. But for right now, um, I'd like to know how that money was distributed and so if you would, please, uh, Counselor Benavides, if you could please look into this, ma'am?
Uh, thank you for that, Counselor Martinez, I will tell you that I had no idea that was done, if it was done, nor did I receive an invitation to attend, nor was I offered a ticket to attend if that was the case. So I will definitely investigate and I will let you know.
I have a comment, actually, uh, that money didn't come out of lodgers tax, it's been being paid. Counselor, you've been a member for years at NMHMA, the city's been cutting a check there the last five, six years, uh,
Longer, longer.
Longer than that. Uh, and Counselor Benavides, that's actually not true, you replied to an email saying you didn't want a ticket.
No, I don't recall doing that.
There's a record, actually, Mrs. Garcia has. You declined to take a ticket. Uh, and Counselor Martinez, you got the email, but you checked it a week after on a re-receiv, so uh, you were known of invited from the whole council, everyone was invited to take a ticket. There wasn't completely t- ticket, so that's why it put on email. Uh, you have a habit of not checking your email for about a week or two. Uh, and it's a continual issue, so, I, I don't know what to tell you on that aspect, but the entire council was invited to have a ticket for this.
Well, I, uh, with all due respect, I don't carry my, um, surface with me twenty-four hours to check my email, and if the money didn't come out of lodgers tax, where did the money come from?
It came out of a sponsorship line item that's in the Department for the City Manager's Budget. And additionally, Counselor, you were offered a cell phone so that you could be in communication with your constituency on a daily basis, so you could respond to emails as well. That is not my issue, if you cannot respond to the council and to the public or to the city staff when they're reaching out to you about following up for emails. It's a continued issue with two councils, you don't respond to emails constantly.
My, my constituents have my personal cell phone and know where to get ahold of me, sir.
So Counselor, then let's, let's, let's talk about this more under my matters from the mayor. Any other Counselor comments?
Well, you know, I'll go ahead and state that I, I'm one of the people that utilized one of those tickets. But I was there in a professional capacity, it's not like it's one of the things that I would normally attend, even though I really feel like they do an incredible job of putting that together and promoting the city of Espanola, so I feel like it's money well spent as far as the city goes. There's thousands of people there from all across the state. There's hundreds of people there from our own community that really enjoy music, and it's something that is promoting something of culture in our community. When I agree to take the ticket, I agree to take the ticket because the city of Espanola is actually presenting an award, and it's very important to me that people who are in leadership position show up for these types of activities. Uh, you know, I, I run from, from this event to that meeting, to this constituent, to that constituent. And, and I know what I'm doing, so I'm not gonna complain. But, uh, I think that as a group, we all have to be committed to promoting this community as much as we can in a positive light, and I can't see where, where the musical awards would not be one of those situations, and anybody complaining about us promoting something, especially if you're involved in it, that's sort of hard for me to understand. I had written in, in my previous notes before Counselor Manny started speaking, that is, that I wanted to thank, uh, Counselor, Counselor Manny Martinez and Counselor Justin for the volunteer efforts in the Musical Award Association, I also wanted to recognize Casey from Cadisa and, and the incredible work that he does in putting this whole thing together. And all the rest of the volunteers, because in attending this situation, you really realize how many people it takes to put this event on, and, and the kind of collaboration and effort that it takes is incredible, so it's something that's very good for the city of Espanola, it's very good that we are promoting music in our community. Uh, and I, I was honored to be a part of it and to be having an opportunity to present one of these awards on behalf of the city of Espanola. So, uh, thank, thank you, Counselor, thank, uh, Counselor Justin, and thank Casey. And every volunteer that served in creating that. And thank you, uh, Mr. Yati, for, for utilizing that money to promote something like this, appreciate that.
Counselor Salazar Torres.
Thank you, um, I'm gonna concur with, uh, Counselor Manny Martinez in the sense of just, uh, the finance committee looking to uh, see where all this came from, et cetera, but, um, other than that, uh, um, I just want to say that I had called on the mayor's office, um, months ago, uh, asking that they request state police's presence, uh, and assistance, actually. And I was told that a plan was gonna be set forth, not only with state police, but, uh, Rio Grande County and whatnot, and they just didn't want this to, to, um, get out of control, messy, sloppy, and, you know, they wanted it organized, et cetera. Well, the, I guess my comments were just thrown to the side, or, you know, was this just a moment of opportunity to, to, to shine a little bit, um? What has materialized from all of this since I've asked for this months ago? Um, do we have a plan and what is that plan, or how is this being executed?
Um, I will cover that in matters from the mayor.
Thank you.
Any other Counselor comments? And being none, I'm gonna move on to matters from the mayor, um, a couple of things. There there is a lack of counselors that don't want to be engaged in this council, and that's perfectly fine. Uh, no one has to hold your hand to guide you, to tell you what's going on. Um, you know, it's kind of funny to hear a comment that we've called upon the governor now and asking for a plan. We started in September, we sent a, a request to the governor to get state police assistance here. There was already an operation done. Uh, Counselor Nanette Rodriguez, Counselor Denise Benavides, Counsel, uh, Mayor Protem Peggy Sue Martinez. Chief, there was a meeting at the end of October, it was called Operation Sunshine. It had the arrest of over a hundred thirty individuals with state police, sheriff's department, uh, DEA agents, I believe, chief. There was multitude of enforcement agencies that were engaged. Uh, the council was invited to attend that event. I actually was out of state, but I I actually was out of state, but I attended via Zoom. Uh, this already was launched back in October. Uh, and like I said, it resulted in the arrest of over a hundred individuals during that operation. What we requested this past week was a second operation to assist because we started to see a spike again. I can't be responsible if councillors aren't responding to email. And but we have an obligation to the public to follow through on our emails. You all have received an email regarding an IPR request regarding situation regarding uh the solicitation ordinance. You have been already asked now for close to fifty days to submit your phone records. Your city cellphone is subject to all inspection of public records. You are advised by the New Mexico Municipal League, by the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, and Attorney General's Office to utilize a city issued cellphone. You need to utilize that. Now, when you use your personal device, I can't control that. But you need to be able to provide that city self, that personal cellphone to the city clerk's office in a timely manner. You are subjecting the city to penalties and litigation. You have been provided the opportunity and you should not be conducting city business on your personal phones. That's absolutely unacceptable. You are subjecting the city to multiple fines and penalties from the attorney general's office by utilizing them. We already have phones. You're not breaking the bank. I think the bill was forty dollars a month for each phone. All city business needs to be conducted on a city issued cellphone. There's no excuse. And I'm asking all of you to please comply. If you don't have the documents that are being requested from the attorney, please send an email written saying I don't have them. And that's all you have to do. If you don't have anything, just send them an email. We've received a few, but fifty days over for an IPR request is unacceptable. Um, little bit about the sponsor music awards, uh, I'm thankful for this event being here in our community. The lodger's tax that comes in, uh, the ad that they used, I saw it and it said lodger's tax. That wasn't the best use of the term. Uh, because it came out of the city sponsorship line item which been being used for many years. Uh, probably in the past, when they created that ad, it said lodger's tax, probably shouldn't have said that. But you know, that's that's I take that responsibility because I see that it happens in the past, for the last five, six years, we've been supporting this event. We support the youth and we support the culture of this community. And most importantly, all the visitors and such that come to our community, the the hundreds of people that attend the music awards, they shop and eat here in Espanola. And we want this event to continue to stay in Espanola. And I think it's a worthwhile adventure venture for us to invest in this entity, to keep them coming here in our community. Because it does pay off in the end for our Joel grocery's tax. Um, moving on for some positive themes, I uh.
Yay for positive themes.
I uh, I wanted to recognize this evening some student leaders. I I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Dominic Sandoval at the governor's inauguration board a couple of weeks ago. Uh, Mr. Dominic Sandoval is a senior at Espanola Valley High School. Uh, for those that don't know, he is also the student body president, so we're really excited about that. But Mr. Sandoval also has the recognition distinction of being a New Mexico State Student Council Officer. Uh, very prestigious position for those that don't know. You have to be elected by the schools in the state of New Mexico at their annual conference, which consists of sixty to seventy schools. Uh, and so it's from all across the state, Farmington, Las Cruces and such. And so Dominic is the third person from Espanola to be a state student council officer. And we're very proud of him for that. And uh, he gave me some, he aged me that night, actually, in the top two. Because um, I am the first in the history of Espanola to be the state student council officer. I was state student council president actually ten years ago this year. And uh, what an honor that was to represent my community. And I know Dominic has represented this valley well in that role. And just showcasing the leadership that we have coming out of this community uh, represents who we are as a community. Uh, Dominic, you are a pillar for our community and for our youth. And other youth should aspire to be like you, uh, because you represent Espanola's best. And so when I invited Dominic to come this evening to be recognized, he invited also to join him Alessandra Sanchez, who is a senior at Espanola Valley High School. I mean, forgive me, she's a sophomore at Espanola Valley High School. And she is also a regional state student council officer. She's a district student council officer for the northeast district. She's also class president. She's been in student council for three years. And I understand she's running for state student council office, is that correct? And so that's fantastic for you. It takes a lot of bravery to get out there and run for those positions, so I understand. Also joining them tonight is Ms. Juanita Corral. She's a senior at Espanola High School and she's her senior class president. And she's also the northeast district student council president with the State Student Council Association. And she's currently a student intern at Asamos National Laboratory. And uh, and yet, these are student leaders that we need to recognize in our community. They aren't just re- representing themselves in the school, they're representing it at the state and the regional level. And these are testaments to what kind of people we have in our community and who we are as a valley. And so we're so excited for them. Dominic, thank you for carrying the torch at the statewide representing Espanola. Uh, Alessandro, best of luck now running for the position uh for state student council office. And Juanita as well being uh region district president. Uh, those are great honors because you're representing our community and you're carrying Espanola's best. And we're so proud of you and the accomplishments you've had. I'm sure we'll be hearing about you in the future. Um, so I'm gonna allow you the opportunity to come on up if you wanna speak. And then the council can chime in after that. Dominic, I'm sure you're not personally lost with words.
Yeah.
I'll play.
Oh, sorry. Careful, Ben, be my PCC.
So just personally, before we get started, um, on behalf of the twenty twenty-three graduating senior class, we would love to invite you to our graduation at Espanola Valley High School this year.
Yay. And you guys, it will be on May nineteenth at seven o'clock at the Espanola Valley High School on the football field.
So we would love all of you had the opportunity to have all councillors protest and mayor. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity. It is open to the public and you're always welcome to join as well as anyone else.
And we just wanna thank you guys so much for this recognition. You know, coming from Espanola Valley High School, it's uh, gets a lot of down credit on it. And we're glad that we can make it a better place.
Just serving on the state level itself is just an honor, just knowing that not only are we growing on the state level, this year we have eighty-two schools attending our state student council conference, which is the largest yet. And knowing that, um, I get to make executive uh decisions and votes that not only impact our state, but really benefit the district and the school that I come from. And I'm just really grateful that there's people like after me like Ally that are there wanting to step up to the next challenge. And I'm so grateful that they're there wanting to push themselves to run for state office. Cause I know the past year since I've been a student council officer, it's meant so much to me, not just to serve on the school level, but as on the district and state as well. So I just wanna thank you all for the recognition that is to be a state officer means a lot. Thank you.
Dominic, you even got me to wear my classroom, which has a state student president on here. I had to, I had to fi- figure it out because it's a little big for me nowadays. So I'm gonna let members of the council chime in. Any of them could just.
Councillor Harris on the side. You know, a good job to all of you. Thank you for, I'm sure, all the hard work and commitment that you guys have done. And just keep it up and showing the community and the other students that they can do as well. Thank you, guys, we appreciate you.
Councillor.
Mayor, could we have all members of the Espanola Valley Student Council that are present please stand to be recognized? Is it just them two or is it others?
It's just the three of us here today.
There's three, who's the other one?
Just you, Tom.
Well, thank you guys for coming.
Uh?
Can I have a word?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, thank you guys for coming and thank you for your efforts and shining a positive light on the city. Uh, especially when you're out and about, uh, like Alessandra said, uh, Espanola does get a bad rap sometimes. So when we have students like yourselves that are out there uh showing people who we are, that just changes the way people think about our community. So thank you guys all for what you do and thank you for being here this evening. And you know, one thing I'll say for sure is that all of you certainly have uh, really good support groups that are with you. I mean, we hardly ever get this many people with these students. So the fact that you have this whole chambers will just tells me that you're very careful and that that's part of our culture also, so thank you, guys.
Councillor Nanette Rodriguez.
Well, first of all, Dominic, um, I wanna congratulate you on your leadership qualities. Um, because you didn't stand before us by yourself. You included your co-students with you. And that's really, um, that's really a characteristic of leadership. So thank you for that. And thank you all for representing the city of Espanola in such a positive light. You are correct, the city of Espanola does get a bad rap. But people don't recognize and they don't know the quality of students and people in our community. This is probably the most caring community that I have visited. And I've visited many. Um, there's nothing like our hand they here. So thank you, continue the hard work and we're here to support you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the councillors. Uh, Alessandra, I wanted to tell you best wishes. And I also wanted to tell you, bring back state student council conference here so that you can have all the students stay in our hotels, eat in our restaurants, et cetera. Next year will be ten years since it was last in Espanola. And so there was over a thousand students that came to Espanola that year and it helped greatly to the grocery system stacks. And we were fortunate that year that the city also gave us lodger's tax that year as well. Imagine that, folks? So we have these certificates for you. So I wanted to recognize you all, if you mind coming up, Alessandra Sanchez. And Ms. Juanita Corral. And Mr. Dominic Sandoval. Come on, come on, yeah. And all the councillors, go up and take a picture with these student leaders. Don't worry, taking our seats in a couple of years.
Look at me, guys.
Where's Duke?
Part of what?
Beautiful.
Gotcha. Congratulations. Thank you again uh for joining us this evening. Uh, moving on for matters from the mayor, um, we've been meeting with the retail coach constantly about some new business opportunities coming to Espanola. I'm gonna let Jordan talk about that. Uh, the legislative session did kick off last week. I've been already gone two, two times to legislature to set up meetings with our delegation as well as other representatives about how we can get some much needed funding and projects here to Espanola. We have a lot of support now with the money. Our lobbyist has been really aggressively working for us on our behalf. And so we're really excited about what we can reap the fruits of this year's hard work. At the end of the sessions, the sixty day session, we're really lobbying for the city of Espanola at least return to work legislation for our public safety officers so that we can get a fully staffed police department. Uh, but that's, that's what's been going on the last two weeks since the last city council meeting that I've been working on. So, um, anyone ever have a questions for my office?
I'll, I'll, I'll pose that to the manager.
Okay. Uh, turn it over to Mr. Yeti, city manager.
Thank you, sir. Um, to start off with Riverside, we met with the engineers last week. We are currently trying to find out exactly how the funding is coming from for this project. So it is a federal funds, but we do not know what the federal government is can distribute the funds to us or the state will distribute the funds. This makes a difference on the environmental clearance that we have to have in order to receive the funds. So I'm working with uh, we're practicing the standards office to find out exactly how this is coming. So I can have the engineers start on that environmental clearance and right away issues that we will have to have in place before we can fully receive the funds. We are shooting for a bid start opening date in the next thirty days. We should have our answers by then. At that point in time, it will be a forty-five day bid that we will go out for. So we were awarded at a council meeting after that forty-five days. Um, this project, the magnitude of it, this will essentially replace all the water and sewer lines from the trading post up to Fairview. We will do laterals that go off into the neighborhoods. Since we're doing laterals that go off into the neighborhoods, we will actually be repaving on most of the streets in the area. Because I don't like saw cuts, wide saw cuts, fill them, they cause water infiltration, they go bad. Let's do it right. The mayor and I are gonna meet with the DOT. And if we can actually get the DOT to agree to resurface uh Riverside like they have been talking about and the funding is there at the same time, that will save us about five million dollars on this project because we will not have to resurface. If they're not willing to resurface at the same time, then maybe they will allow us to come in and just do a small skim coat of an inch asphalt on top. And since they're gonna resurface it in the near future, that will once again save us quite a bit of money. The trash department, sanitation department is starting to deliver poly carts. Um, this will be a slow and tedious process. They started on Monday. They are going through and registering every poly cart by CL number to an address. And it is put with the water bill. So if a resident, if your poly cart goes missing, you can call the billing department. And we will send somebody out to find out where your trash can disappear to. Uh, we're looking at a close date coming up for commercial trash. We are trying to make sure that we are gonna have our dumpsters in place before we publicly announce when we're gonna start doing the commercial trash. Our collection center has been open now for a little bit over a week, running smoothly, no problems, no trash blowing down the road. The guys have done a great job on maintaining and making sure everything stays where it needs to stay, that we get the trailers hauled off like we're supposed to at the end of the day. Everything is running smoothly on that. Working with the lobbyists, they are trying to set up a legislative date for the city of Espanola mid-February. I am hoping by the end of this week, she will give me a date so I can give you all the date. I will hope that y'all could attend to help us lobby to try to get some of this money that we are trying to get on our ICIP projects. Um, city hall. It's a disaster in the the smallest sense. They have started replacing before from the original flood at the moment. So utility building is in this building right here. Uh, we have a couple of employees that are working from home. Rest of us are still stuck into our cubicle style offices while we work. They have started the drywall repair on the preview, on the slats flood. That work should be done by the middle of next week, at which point in time they will start putting the floor down. So if everything goes well and we pass our air quality test, the next meeting, y'all will be back into the normal council chambers. Um, I really wanna applaud staff, not just city hall staff, but staff citywide. You know, you lose city hall and you misplace people and it just changes how everything's done from finance to HR, the staff has taken it all in stride, especially city hall staff who went from having private offices now to being stuck in a room with everybody else. And then today they started doing the floor and there was a nice over in the building. So and they worked through it and even if I were to. So and they worked through it and even if our department, fire department came over and helped, the general services guy moved furniture out. So everybody's come together and taking this in stride and I thinking this could end up being a positive. Last Thursday night, we had a water line break on Gusto. We found a situation with that water line break, something exposed itself uh. Either we have a valve that is completely broken or we have a cross link on the line because we could not turn off the water from the tank. We ended up losing about a million gallons of water. They uh it went into the river. Luckily it didn't flood anybody. It went down the hill, went into the river. But we got the line fixed. The line break was caused by cold weather and a core insul installation of pipe. So when they dug the pipe and got it out, there was a huge section of river rock that was under the pipe and the pipe flexed and the river rock shocked bottom of the pipe up and destroyed the pipe. We ended up losing about twenty feet of pipe on that break. The uh it's been repaired. We have plans to get the valve tested and then if we can't, if it wasn't the valve, that's an easy fix. If we have a cross connection somewhere, we're gonna have to figure out where the cross connect is that allow the tank to drain. But talking to Bryce, there we have to find a way to be able to turn that tank off because it takes thirty three hours to throw that tank out. Uh just got word today that La Cerna Pool is closed. We have a leak in the pump room. I don't have a lot of information. I will get on that tomorrow and I will send y'all an email on how bad it is. It could be something just as simple as a gasket or it could be that we have a busted motor or something like that. Uh the mayor mentioned the retail coach. We are working with retail coach. This is now the time of year when these retail uh places start signing contracts. It's their first quarter of their rational fiscal year, so they start looking at development. We have a lot of them wanting to come in. Dunkin' Donuts is one. They are interested on the west side. I H D Hotel Group is interested in coming in. We have a lot of big box retailers that are also interested in coming in. So we're working closely with them and trying to get, I think the first one that you're gonna see in town is gonna be Dunkin' Donuts. They are gunny about coming in. And that's all I have.
Any questions to the manager, Ms. Amber, can I please say?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Yeti. Uh we have a update on the status of the new police station and the fire department. And then I have some other stuff that I wanna ask you about.
Uh the new police station, we are waiting to install cameras. Those should be installed hopefully within the next couple weeks and then it will get moved. At that point in time, when we have a good firm date on them, the lease will come to y'all for peak behavioral health is who is wanting to rent the old PD building. They are based out in New Mexico. Um I was actually on the phone with her this afternoon before the meeting. But soon as we have a good firm date when we're moving, that will come to y'all for a couple fulls. Uh the fire department, they just got finished with all the asbestos removal, getting ready to move into demolition.
Uh what's the date on uh the cameras being installed over there? Any idea?
Uh we were waiting for the lead time. They're thinking it's gonna be a couple weeks.
So we probably will not be in that building until like end of February maybe?
Being right, so we're looking like they're in a headway right now. Mizel, the police team Mizel Garcia really needs the cameras for security reasons before he moves into.
Of course. Um and the fire department is looking at demolition in the next week or two?
Yes.
Okay, uh can you tell me if we've made any headway at all on Fireman Montez in the situation with that paving and the drainage or anything to add there?
Well, we have a meeting with DOT um please next week. At that point in time, DOT actually has a storm drain that runs through that easement, the bubble easement. We have gotten actual permission from the club to hook into that storm drain if we can get permission with DOT.
So if we can get permission from DOT to hook that up, that project becomes totally ready, correct?
Yes, at that point in time because we have a place with the water gun.
Okay, then the other thing that I have concerns about deals with the li- a light audit and the funding that we did when we did the uh the franchise agreement with Hamas Coop. We talked about saving that one percent extra for lighting up the city of Espaola. Have we moved forward at all on that?
We will, that will be coming to y'all hopefully at the next meeting, the meeting after. We will need an ordinance outlining where y'all want to place streetlights. Um that comes to y'all. The money has not been spent. I don't know if we even billed him for the one percent yet. Um so that that has not come in. We have not billed him for it. I'll check and see if we actually received payment on that.
Could.
But soon as the ordinance is asked, that ordinance will outline where the lights get installed first and where, so where you go. You normally you focus on intersections.
Right.
Then you start focusing on pedestrian areas that we know there's gonna be walkers from parks and neighborhoods, stuff like that. And then you move into areas where there's not as much pedestrian, which won't light. And so that's what the ordinance outline.
Okay, I I like where you're going with that. Uh I just wanna say thank you to everybody that has been working for the city. Thank you to the fire department, thank you to the police department uh for everything that you guys do to keep this community safe. Uh thank you to the staff, especially from from the city workers that are this way. So I mean, I walk through city hall now and just so the public understand, we've had two different floods. We had a flood during the Thanksgiving break, then we had a flood afterwards. Opposite sides of the building flooded, so at one point we could move everybody from one side to the other side. Now both sides are flooded, so they're literally in the chambers and in uh and in uh
Here.
And here and and everywhere that we could possibly have them. And to be honest with you, I I I don't know how you guys are functioning, but I certainly appreciate the efforts that you guys are making to make sure that things continue to run smoothly for the city. It can't be easy. I get stressed out going in there for five minutes because there's furniture everywhere and it look like quarters and it's awful. But you know, uh looking forward to how it's gonna look when we finally get it all done. And I just really wanna thank the staff also for putting up with the situation and getting through it at best chance. So thank you guys.
Any other questions for the manager for this report?
Yeah.
Counselor Aaron Salazar.
Thank you, Mayor. Um thank you, city manager. Um have you found out of tape on the street? After Los Alamos Highway that runs up to Don Quixote, is that state?
Watch upon you.
Well, it's
Is that almost highway?
No, after Los Alamos Highway up to Don Quixote, watch upon the road. A state or a city? We're gonna look into that because
I can look into that, I can.
And does that road horrible? Or or
The county's indicated to me if it's a county road, they're willing to help assist paving it. But if it's a city road, they're they'll work with us up to the county section.
Okay.
Because it turns into county road too.
Yeah.
At a certain point, that's the that's that's the issue that we run into is we don't know where the ownership of the county takes over and where its party.
Well, there's still the county, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
In 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 logical sense.
That's such a road right there.
I will look into it and then if we really need to get it down to, there has to be a plot somewhere and we can get a survey to mark where we stop and where they start. But if they're willing to work with us, I'm sure we can come up with something.
Oh, they committed.
Okay.
It's like it's cold, trying to get a hot consider where we're making just
I I actually have a pile of grindings over there, so if they got a lot of bottles, I can send Elijah over there. I got a whole pile of millions.
We're sorry. That whole stretch is a big old pile of
If we have a pile of millions, there was some work done on Upper San Pedro where they make the turn in there.
Okay.
Uh huh.
And for some reason, I don't know if it's because people stop and then they turn, that whole empties out
Okay.
relatively quickly.
Okay.
So they could drop those load in there.
I can do that because when they resurface down here on uh on the Deontay, they turned around and gave us all the millions. So we actually
For say for say o de oña.
A nothing. I I I'm from Texas, it doesn't matter. I took three years of German.
That's a bit hard to hear. You should have taken Spanish.
Wait, I was gonna be different.
Also, um I asked for the Millings person. Uh I'd like to straight right across the admin building.
Uh huh.
There's three uh streetlights. Two are uh two are out only when we're working really dark.
Okay.
Those are ours. I mean, those are the M S Coops.
Okay.
I will call that camera as well.
Yeah. Yeah, it's it's really dark in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's an underground fault. There's why they haven't been able to get I'm gonna have to go more and redo the thing. That's what is going on. There would happen with the fault line now.
That's where
The fault line got water and they're gonna have to go more, I mean.
It's a sinking issue.
Okay. I will pressure them to re-bore and bury the cable.
Thank you.
Get a letter from us.
I think you guys could probably do that, right? You can fix that situation.
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Uh any other questions for the manager's report? If we none, for what? The items proposed for council consideration, uh discussion items, action items. If you want to approve the one year lease to the U S Bureau of Reclamation of the city's unused portion of the San Juan Rio Chamo project water.
Uh yes, Mayor. This is the same thing I assigned last year. Essentially, this is, I still can't really comprehend. They tried to explain it to me all day today when I was with them. So the water has already been used, so this actually contract is for like last year's water.
That that we did not use.
That we did not use.
It's stored water that we did not use that they did use. Yes.
Yes. Yes. And so, well, even if we didn't lease it to, we can lease it to somebody else. So more than likely next year, there actually might be kinda like a little bit of bidding war going on for this.
Yes.
And so y'all might not be leasing it to them next year. Depends on how everything else goes, so y'all might actually get to choose between about three different places.
What is the amount that we're collecting from this situation?
It is a set amount.
Okay, it's here.
Yeah.
Maximum of twenty one thousand dollars.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Peggy Sue Martinez, second by Counselor Nate Rodriguez. The discussion. Discussion, Miss Garcia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Peggy Sue Martinez.
In favor.
Counselors, uh Dennis Tim Salazar.
For the motion.
Justin Salazar Torres. Daniel J. Martinez.
For the motion.
Denise D. Benavides.
In favor.
Dorothy D. Valdez.
For the motion.
Erin J. Salazar.
In favor.
Nanette D. Rodriguez.
For the motion.
Motion carries.
Any two members of the governing body. Moving on to executive session, notice is hereby given that the mayor and the governing body of the city of Espaola will enter into executive session in accordance with the Mexico Open Meetings Act pursuant to the Mexico Open Meetings Acts N M S A nineteen seventy eight, section ten fifteen one, H subsection two, limited personnel matters to include contract and six month evaluation of the city manager, Mr. Jordan Yeti.
Motion to go into executive session as presented.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Peggy Sue Martinez to enter into executive session.
Second.
Second by Counselor Denise Benavides. The discussion. Miss Garcia, would you please call a roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Peggy Sue Martinez.
In favor.
Counselors Dennis Tim Salazar.
For the motion.
Manuel J. Martinez.
In favor.
Denise D. Benavides.
In favor.
Dorothy D. Valdez.
For the motion.
Erin J. Salazar.
In favor.
Nanette D. Rodriguez.
For the motion.
Motion carries.
Alright, councilors, um there's a separate link that was sent in to all. Please confirm you did receive it. Uh we'll be probably regrouping in the next ten minutes. Thank you. Uh we'll be probably regrouping in the next ten minutes. Thank you.
That one I can see writing code though.
Yeah, that one, yeah. You told the guys stop writing code to crack unless you have to.
Uh.
So who's going?
That one they can write code to.
Going to be this twenty three, twenty two, twenty, S P O one, E S P R two, Meru one.
See that's the one. That text doesn't come in there for me. Go ahead and go.
Don't talk for a minute.
Four.
Five.
You're not, you're the mayor, you don't count the number of four.
Yes, you do.
You got you.
Yes, you do.
Four.
It's half, it's half of, half of, half of, half of.
I've never had the mayor count as four.
Five.
You're not, you're the mayor. You don't count for a four.
Yes, you do.
I do.
Yes, you do.
Four.
It's a couple of times after.
Half of, half of, half of.
I've never had the mayor count as a four.
Yeah.
I've been a several.
It's on that little blue, on that little red in the pocket.
Right.
Let me call for it.
Next to the.
Okay, there's two on line two.
Next.
And then one more than half, the whole, what would you want?
Good evening, everyone. We're gonna reconvene from executive session.
Motion to.
No action was taken in executive session during this meeting. Can I get a motion to exit out of executive?
So.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Peggy Sue Martinez, second by Councilor Denise Benavides. Can I do a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Peggy Sue Martinez.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilors Dennis Tim Salasad.
For the motion.
Justin J. Salasad Porres. Manuel J. Martinez.
He had it go.
There you go.
Denise Di Benavides.
In favor.
Dorothy Di Valdez.
No further business before this body. We are going to adjourn the meeting. The time is eight twenty nine. Thank you all for coming.